Before we begin, it is important. So that they may have adequate time to present their requests. Before we get started, are there any board members who stand to directly benefit financially from any decision that is made tonight?
No.
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 All right. Are there any? Susan Christie. When you come forward, please state your name and your address.
I'm Susan Christie, Level 367, Oakwood Loop.
Good.
Um, I have just general comments when you're doing your zoning that I would hope that the committee or under the authority of the board would call you. Also, I apologize because the wrong name of the board would consider. Um, I find it very concerning being in Hempstead with Jacksonville, Wilmington being our only exits and the main evacuation. Has the committee considered having studies done on how long an emergency situation it would take to get everybody out of Hempstead seeing that we are the last in line? And how many hours per thousand people added will add to our time if we had to get out in the emergency? So I would like you all to consider that when you're considering reserving. Um, the other thing, I do have a question. I was told by the fire commissioner that when a community is developed with a hundred homes or more, there has to be two emergency accesses. Is this correct? Two egresses?
I believe that's correct.
Is there any circumstance in which this board or committee would consider exempting that or going around that?
Man, the, this board is handles zoning matters. We don't enforce, or this board doesn't enforce the state fire code. Uh, there are separate rules that relate to the state fire code and, and the county zoning requirements. We'd be happy to answer some of those questions directly if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like that done. Um, and then, um, I would also like for the committee board to consider the percentage of renters to homeowners in this area. Um, it is a great concern when you have a lot of runners move in that they are people who are not invested in the com- the community. Um, with a lot of runners, you also end up with a lot of crime. We have trouble with the police as it is and, um, there's not enough of them for who's here. Yet it seems that the planning committee is allowing for a lot of high-density, low-cost housing to move in, which causes concerns for the community. That how are we even going to keep up with the police? How are we going to keep up with the schools? How are we going to keep up with the roads? Are you all planning in any way to hold the developers responsible for building new schools, for, um, helping with the roads? What is the, um, board doing with that? And I would just like you all to consider that because it is a great concern to the community. Thank you all for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Is it the first case?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Cherry is going to be presenting the, the first case on the agenda this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight's case is a rezon 2024 66 KG Plaza LLC. The applicant and owner, they're requesting to modify their existing conditional zoning district to allow, uh, the residents of Sanctuary at Forest Sound to store recreational boats, RVs, campers, trailers, and a one hundred and six unit private storage facility. Facility will be approximately four and a half acres with a hundred and six storage units. And the existing, uh, conditional zoning district was created in 2015, which allowed for a hundred and six single-family homes. Uh, here's a vicinity map of the area. Obviously, it's right by us. Here is the annex. There's Forest Sound Road and it'll be right up back here about five hundred feet. Here's an aerial image. Uh, you can see it's heavily, uh, vegetated. There's a lot of trees and everything. Um, here is a map or plot of the, uh, original neighborhood with the hundred and six single-family homes. Existing conditions off of Forest Sound Road. Um, these are pictures that staff took recently, uh, to show the densely vegetated area. Um, a lot of trees brush right by the roads and into the neighborhood. Next, we have a zoning map showing the conditional district, uh, the general business to the north by an RP to the, uh, start to the north and south and a GB to the west. Uh, this is the applicant's original site plan. It consisted of a hundred and fifty-four, uh, storage units. And after the public input meeting, the applicant decided to reduce the overall number of units and overall footprint from a hundred and fifty-four units to a hundred and six to match with, uh, what is in the residential portion of the, uh, sub- neighborhood. So here is the updated site plan. Uh, as you can see, there's, uh, about a thirty percent overall reduction in footprint. Um, we have traffic numbers provided by NC DOT and WMPO, um, along US seventeen and Forest Sound Road. Uh, we know that US seventeen is over capacity. However, traffic for this, uh, proposal will be limited mostly to Forest Sound Road and the numbers are expected to be comparable to what already exists as it's a private amenity for the community. Uh, it won't be something that generates much extra traffic. Uh, in this conditional zoning district, uh, there's no residential uses being proposed. And, um, we are, they're proposing NACE Code 531330, which allows us to mini warehouses and self-storage as well as miscellaneous use of storage of out, of boats and watercraft outdoor on the dry, on dry str- dry stack structures, excuse me. Um, here we have a setback for the zoning district, um, which there are thirty all the way around. But this, as you can see in the maps, will be much further than that from the road. Let me pause here and just see if the board have any questions I could answer at this time.
What is the change again from the previous approval to the, what's currently being proposed? Was there a residential unit count that changed?
Um, no. What changed was the, uh, total number of proposed, uh, storage units. It went from a hundred and fifty-four to a hundred and six to match, uh, the residential.
So there was a hundred and fifty-four previously approved?
Previously proposed, not approved, no, sir. The applicant will be using, uh, existing vegetation for their buffers, um, except for the along Forest Sound Road. That'll be an A four buffer and that'll be a thirty-foot wide strip with a canopy tree and two understory trees. And here we can see an aerial image of the approximate location of the entrance along Forest Sound Road and the proposed storage area. Uh, you see it's well, with well past thirty feet all around. Um, and it'll be very hard to see from any road. It'll be setback and bu- the screening will be very dense in there with the existing vegetation.
It's the width of the A four buffer again? Was it A four?
I'm sorry?
What was the width of the buffer?
Uh, it's thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
And that'll be right here along Forest Sound Road toward the entrance of the project.
And that's a condition staff's proposing?
Uh, not a condition, that, it's what the applicant's proposing as a buffer.
Which I'm assuming would just be the current vegetation.
Correct. They'll be keeping the current vegetation and then like toward the entrance, whatever that they clear out, that'll be replanted with buffers.
Sure.
Um, like I mentioned earlier, at the public input meeting, uh, based on feedback from the community, the applicant has revised their original site plan from a hundred and four storage units to a hundred and six to match the number of residences. This is the future land use map. We're seeing it's a low-density residential, um, through this area. Excuse me a moment. In this, uh, land use classification, um, the desired uses are singer- single-family residential duplexes and townhomes as well as recreation parks and open space. Inappropriate uses are non-residential developments, single-family dwellings that are attached, uh, and multi-family residential uses. And so that brings me to a staff's recommendation, which is for approval. And, uh, based off the amending of the conditional zoning district would be consistent with the intent of the initial development by providing an amenity to the existing regis- residential development. And this is supported by two, uh, one policy and one recommended action within the future land use plan. Uh, policy five point one point F conditional zoning and recommended action five one K one discouraging the construction of storage facilities along road frontage. Uh, does the board have any questions at this time?
So with your recommendation, uh, the owner of his property, developer, could put in dry stack storage for boats and/or, um, storage containers like you might see at mini storage at the green or something along those lines?
Uh, no, so this is, the developer would putting in storage for boats, not, it won't be like, um, so, uh, the applicant might be able to provide a picture of what it will be like to clarify a little bit, but it's not going to be like storage units like, uh, at a mini storage facility.
Is that a condition?
So we have, uh, three conditions of approval actually. Um, one is that it'll remain private and only for the use of residents within Sanctuary at Forest Sound and that'll comply with, uh, Pender UDO and that'll meet all other local, state, and federal regulations. Uh, but no, sir, that, the dry stack is not a condition.
So they can put a dry stack in. Is there a certain height limitation? Is that just the ordinance of thirty-five feet?
I believe it's limited to forty feet. I'm not sure if the applicant can read it. Um, clarify how tall the actual units will be.
But the, you said that the, they modified the number of units to match the number of homes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So unless there's room for more homes, they really couldn't and wouldn't need any reason to build more storage?
I, I wouldn't think so, no, sir. But that's, uh, maybe, maybe above my pay grade for developer.
Did you say that, that is dry stack or could it just be open storage?
Uh, could you define open storage?
Open stor- just pull it into a parking spot? Pull the boat into a parking spot?
I think that will all be covered, but that would be for the applicant to confirm.
Do we have any more questions from staff? Not this time. Okay. All right. Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tucker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name's Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington. Uh, my office address is thirty-two oh five Randall Parkway Street, one oh four. And I'm here tonight representing the owner and applicant KG Plaza LLC. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. We do have a presentation that I think will help explain the request. And certainly want to answer any questions that the board has. Um, with me this evening are my client representatives, Robert Jackson and Dean Hardington. Uh, and Brad Schuler, who's a land planner with Paramount Engineering, as well as our civil engineer, Tim Clink Scales with Paramount Engineering is here tonight to answer any questions that the board may have. This is a request to modify a conditional zoning district. And while we were pulling up our presentation, if, if we could, um, I'll just clarify a few things based on some of the questions. This is not a commercial use. This is not open, or what's being proposed is not open or available to the public. It's, it's entirely for the residents and only the residents of the Sanctuary at Forest Sound to store recreational vehicles, RVs, travel trailers, boats, probably for the most part, on surface level. There is no dry stack storage whatsoever. There's no covering on this storage. It's just surface level parking of RVs. Uh, there's no renting of these spaces to anybody. There's no selling of them, uh, or use by anyone outside of the sanctuary community. And as was mentioned before, the number of proposed spaces has been limited to match exactly the number of approved residential lots. And that was approved back in twenty fifteen by the, uh, approved for, recommended for approval by the planning board in twenty fifteen and unanimously approved by the county commissioners in twenty fifteen for the one hundred and six, uh, unit single-family residential community. Yeah, okay, great. Okay. So I'll move on to the, uh, and, uh, no mini storage. There's, there won't be many storage units in there. So, um, Mr. Cherry did a great job with the overview, so I'll just touch on a few things and, um, highlight a few, a few points here. Um, I'll go through this. Um, the Sanctuary at Forest Sound, as I mentioned, this was approved in twenty fifteen. It's a hundred and six unit, single-family detached subdivision. The overall development is approximately a hundred and twenty acres. And that was a rezoning from the residential performance to the, um, residential mixed, uh, conditional zoning. Planning board recommended approval and that was approved unanimously in November of twenty fifteen by, uh, the county board of commissioners. The area proposed modification is shown here with the yellow star on the, um, existing site plan. And as Mr. Cherry pointed out, it's roughly about four and a half acres of this hundred and twenty acre site, the, or the hundred and twenty acre conditional zoning district. And here's just a few sort of aerial photographs to provide some context. I know the board is very familiar with the area. We're obviously sitting in the building that I've, um, highlighted here as the Pender County Annex Building. Um, there's commercial in the vicinity and we've highlighted here the entrance to the Forest Sound Road. And you can see the approximate location of the access into the proposed facility here on Forest Sound Road. A couple of things I'll mention too. My client, um, and these can, these can be conditions if the board is so inclined, um, to, um, to, uh, recommend approval. Um, my client is certainly willing to address any issues with the roadway. If they were caused by the construction, as far as repairs or maintenance that would be, uh, necessitated to the Forest Sound Road would be a hundred percent responsible for repairing that. When my client constructed the, um, residential component, my understanding is he, um, my client, uh, upgrade or upgraded or improved the road, brought it up to a, it's a very good standard now if you've, if you've driven down the road recently from seventeen to the entrance to the subdivision. And, uh, there's a road maintenance agreement in place, so moving forward, there's fifty percent of the road maintenance is on the sanctuary regardless of what happens with this rezoning application. But certainly any damage or wear and tear caused due to construction, my client would address that a hundred percent. Um, just to provide sort of a land use context here, it's quite, you know, it's commercial up on seventeen and it just really provide, would provide a nice buffer or transition back to the residential lots. Again, this is not adding any density. Um, there's no change in the approved density. Um, we would respectfully contend there's no impacts on schools be, in, in this with, um, additional housing. Really no significant traffic impacts. I've got a slide here where we'll talk about traffic impacts. But I know this board is, you know, familiar. We're seeing some larger developments. You can see a two hundred, three hundred unit apartment complex and then you're really talking about some significant traffic numbers. But here we're talking about two and three trips in the peak hour, so really just minimal traffic impact here. And these are folks that would be going up Forest Sound Road anyway to get to their residence or leaving the residence. So it's, again, it's purely for the residents of the sanctuary. Uh, as Mr. Cherry mentioned, the original plan provided significantly more spaces and we've reduced that to the one oh six. Um, I think it's mentioned in the staff report that the overall footprint was reduced about thirty-four percent. But it's again roughly thirty-one percent fewer spaces. Um, it'll be gated and there's quite a bit of sort of, um, taper or stem, I'm not sure what the planning word would be, off of Forest Sound Road. Um, again, just to, if you had two folks pulling in at the same time with trailers, there's more than ample space there. You know, this is, it's residential in nature. It's got a hundred and six spaces, but I think logically not everybody's going to have an RV or a boat. So I, it, it's probably not likely it would be used in a maximum capacity at, at any given time, although it could be. But it, again, it's, it's, I think it would be periodic and probably seasonal type of usage.
Are they needed?
It would be controlled by the homeowners association, so I don't know that it would be, the, the deeds have, the mats have already been recorded and deeds have been conveyed and that sort of thing. So it wouldn't be something where someone owns a plot. It would be controlled by the homeowners association, which would be responsible for abiding by all the conditions, keep making sure that ordinances and any conditions on the rezoning were followed. And there would be a mechanism to enforce that with the gating and also for maintenance. So there's a lot of benefit to it being sort of controlled and managed by the HOA. Just real briefly on the land use plan, I won't go into this in detail, but being a coastal community and a coastal county, boating is a big part of Pender County, as well as all of coastal North Carolina. And although this doesn't involve direct water access, it, it does allow residents to enjoy boating that may not have direct access, but it would allow a resident to store their boat and, or their RV. And of course, boating access and water access is a, is a big part of your land use plan. Again, indirectly, but it's something that the residents of the, of the community would be able to enjoy as an amenity. And we would contend, again, very low impact. This would be a very low impact use. I talked about the traffic numbers, again, these are, and these are the WMPO numbers. Peak hour trips, that's really low, and I would contend that the, probably the peak hours for this type of use are, don't really, I would, I would guess they don't probably coincide with the peak hour of people getting to work, getting home from work, you know, getting kids to school and that sort of thing. Weekend would probably be the, the most it would be used. So here's the revised site plan, and that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. I think I've covered most of the points, but certainly glad to answer any questions that the board may have, and we appreciate your time.
The area that's not going to be used for storage, is that going to be cleared for any other reason?
No, sir, I think most of that is wetlands, has some environmental features. The, I think as mentioned in the staff report, I would defer to the land planners and the engineers, but I think it's mentioned in the staff report that the particular area we're talking about is, does not have an, an area of environmental concern, but there are wetlands around there, and of course, we, we're not going to disturb wetlands, those are, those would be regulated. But there, I don't, I wouldn't envision other development around that.
Open space for the?
It, it, yes, sir, it's really, it really provides a natural buffer, again, so.
Danny, can we have member staff come in?
So I, I think the, I think the.
Is, um, do, do the residents here have access to the Forest Sound boat ramp, or are they headed to the public boat ramp? Whi- which boat ramp are they using?
It would be the public boat ramp. I don't believe there's any, to my, to my knowledge, there's no, there's no right to use any.
Uh, my, my, my question was, do the residents here, do the boat owners have access to the Forest Sound boat ramp? Okay.
No, sir, no, sir.
And is this area going to be paved, or is it gravel?
It would be gravel.
Gravel?
Per, per, my understanding would be pervious gravel.
Okay.
Mr. Nichols, initially you have a hundred and fifty-four lots or, or areas to, to park boats or RVs or so forth, and you've cut it down to one oh six. Now, I'm assume, I, I assume from your drawings that, that this has diminished your footprint.
Yes, sir.
Is there the possibility down the road that that thirty percent reduc-, thirty-one percent reduction in a footprint might be used for some other development?
Well, certainly that would not be allowed unless this board, unless that type of application or request went through this board, and would have to be approved by the county commissioner. So there's no plan to do that. I don't know what you would potentially do with that, other than just add more storage. But as I said, I don't really think it's needed. I, I think the chances of everybody in the subdivision needing a slip there or space there is probably not likely. But everyone would have the availability to have a space. But we, we would certainly be bound by any conditions the board imposes, and also the site plan that we're asking the board to review. And if, if ultimately approved, we're, we're bound by that site plan, so we could not do anything over there without community meeting, public hearings, approval by the county commissioners. It would go, it would go through the whole, the whole process, but there's, there's no intent, sir, to, to do anything with that other portion.
So is it safe to say the covenants are going to be revised to say that only the homeowners can use that spot? That it's not going to be subleased or rented out, just to make sure that it is the homeowners who will be using? So the covenants would have to be amended through the HOA, so that would have to be a condition?
Um, yes, ma'am, my understanding is that, that would take place, but be, beyond that, and what has, would have more force would be, it would be a condition of the zoning, so if that's not done, we would, we would be in trouble with the county and zoning enforcement, and that would be, I think, a bigger issue than the, the, but that's a great point. I, I think having the covenants amended would be, would be perfectly fine. It's, it's a good idea, but yes, yes.
Well, who, who's going to keep up with that? I mean, who's going to say who's parking where? Who's going to say this person doesn't belong here?
So I have one in my development, and it's run by the HOA, and they actually collect the registration, insurance, et cetera, and they assign you a spot, and they keep track of it each year.
And, and, and the HOA being in place and there being a mechanism for that, I think, is a big help here, because that's, there's an enforcement mechanism in place, because there are covenants. And then it's really a, sort of a point of contact or point of governance to, to address issues if any issues come up with the county. So, but we would have to follow, we have to follow the ordinance, and then on top of that, any conditions and the requirements of the approval, if it's approved.
And as Mr. Nichols suggested, the HOA would have the incentive to make sure it was enforced, because otherwise, all the other members could lose their right to use the space, which.
Yes.
I don't imagine would make the residents very happy.
No, no, sir, no, I, I think that, that would probably get some folks upset.
Do you know if there was any, did they look into maybe accessing this portion of the property from the, I believe it's the lead drive extension side? I know there's some wetlands there that would have to be crossed, but. I was just asking if there had been any exploration as far as accessing this portion of the property from the lead drive extension side of the property.
My understanding is the wetlands would, the environmental features would not, would not allow that. I'm not an engineer, so I, I can, I can ask anyone from the, from the group here if they have any more specific, specific information, if that would even be feasible. But my understanding is that's, that's not, that's not really possible. I don't know if I've answered your question, I'm sorry.
Sort of. The road maintenance agreement that you previously mentioned. I'm assuming the HOA has been turned over to the community. And is that road maintenance agreement between the HOA, or is it between the developer and Forest Sound?
The, I've got a copy of it, if you'll give me one second, I'll tell you the exact parties to. I've got a property improvement agreement, and this is dated August, seventeenth of August two thousand and eighteen, and it's between and among Forest Sound, Homeowners Association, Inc., Graybull, Inc., and then my client is KG Plaza LLC. So those are the parties to the agreement, and I don't, I don't see any problem with the board wanting to see that. I have copies of it if the board would like to see it.
When the developer's done, eh, who, who's, sorry, when the developer's done, I mean, is, how, I'm not an attorney, how does that agreement convey to where that road maintenance is always sort of kept up for the Forest Sound folks?
Well, I think that's a requirement now, again, regardless if this is approved or denied, the, my understanding is my client is responsible for fifty percent of the maintenance of that road.
So, so that's, that's binding on successors, if?
Yes, it, it, it would be. So I, I don't, and I'm not aware of that being any sort of issue. I mean, the, 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 if you've been out there, you'll see the residences are constructed, I'm not sure if all one, a hundred and six have been constructed, but it's substantially completed. And I'm not aware of any issues with, they're being, I guess, unresolved. I think that was what the agreement was back in twenty eighteen. I wasn't involved in the original rezoning in twenty fifteen and then the road maintenance component, but I'm not aware of any issues with access or maintenance. And like I said, my client did significant improvements to the road following the completion of the infrastructure and the, and the residential component. And so the roads in, the road looks to be in really good shape right now.
So I just want to make sure, the, the road maintenance agreement is for having, not just when it's during construction, it's, it carries over to once everything's established and turned over, that road maintenance agreement stays in effect? Or is it just for the time period of when that development is in construction?
No, my understanding is it's, it's, it's maintenance, and I don't know that it, I don't know that it has a.
I believe he said previously that.
Yeah, I, I don't.
During construction, any damages to the road would, would be taken care of by the, the applicant.
And they're open to making that a condition as well?
But is that just the, is that road maintenance agreement just for the time period, and then once all the?
Well, I believe he said, and I'm not, I'm not saying sure, but the way I interpret it is that the development, that the housing development is responsible for fifty percent of the road maintenance, and then the, and then the, the existing Forest Sound HOA is responsible for the other fifty percent. Yeah, that's what.
Mr. Nichols, can you go back and explain the three parties again?
Um, y- yes, sir, the parties to the agreement are Forest Sound, Homeowners Association, Inc., the Graybull, Inc., and then.
I'm sorry, and then your client?
My client is KG Plaza LLC.
And KG Plaza will then transfer this to Sanctuary, to, at Forest Sound?
Yep.
As a, as a successor, the decklord hands over the HO, the property, the HOA to the community?
That, that, that is my understanding, that it's perpetual. I don't think there's any, again, I didn't draft the document, I wasn't part of it, so I've been handed a copy of it and have looked at it, and my, and my understanding of it, based upon my discussions with my client, I'm glad to hand a copy up, is that they are responsible for fifty percent of the maintenance of the road.
And Graybull and this other HOA are responsible for the twenty-five and twenty-five?
Um, it's.
It's three parties.
It's three, number six. Yep. The actual breakdown is, um, Graybull will contribute fifty percent of the cost of maintenance of Forest Sound Road from its intersection with US seventeen to the entrance. And then. Again, it's a, it's a single-spaced, somewhat complicated document, and, but I, but I'm just reciting what I've been told.
Do you know if reserves are in place currently for potential maintenance in the future, or is that something that is, you know, initiated upon some type of determination?
I would have to ask my client about the reserves and who holds those, but it's my understanding too, that in addition to making the repair, or making the upgrades to the road following that, my client, I guess, made a, a payment or contribution to the Forest Sound HOA, I think it was for the purpose of installing a gate. I don't know if the gate was ever installed, but that, that was part of the discussion back when the, back when the, when it came through for the residential component. So there was a component of that, I don't, I don't know what that, if that went into a fund, or, I, when I drove out there this afternoon, I, I didn't see a gate. I don't know if a gate's going to be installed, but that's really up to their sub, their homeowners association, whether they want to gate their community or not. But, so, to, I guess to an, to answer the question, I'm glad to provide this agreement to the board. I, I don't want to profess to be an expert in how they've structured it out there, but my client is certainly willing to pay for any damage, repair, et cetera, associated with any installation if this is approved. And it's my understanding from him that he is, that, I would say the developer or the association, meaning the Sanctuary, they are responsible for fifty percent of the road maintenance from here on out. And there is a provision in there for, like most legal documents have, but there is a specific provision in there about successors and assignments, it's all rights and obligations set forth in this agreement are intended to be, shall be considered covenants running with the land, binding upon and nearing to the benefit of enforceable by the parties and their respect, respective successors and assigns, et cetera, et cetera. So it looks like, you know, very well drafted document, and it's, I'm sure it's binding and.
I mean, the key, the key is successors and assigns. So after developer's done building this out, they're long gone, this needs to transfer over to the homeowners, so it needs to remain in effect, and I think the successors and assigns covers that.
And, and, and running with the land, so you can't, it's like, you can't put in a different LLC and say, wait, wait, that's not me. It's, it runs with the land and it's binding on the.
That was kind of my question, thanks for clarifying that.
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry if I didn't give, gave the roundabout answer, sorry.
So after, if this is approved and the project is completed, the HOA will retain ownership of this property, is that correct?
The HOA, yes, sir, I believe it will be transferred to the HOA, it will be, yes, sir.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you.
Are there any questions amongst ourselves before we bring up the?
I think Mr. Nichols, I'm going to call, uh, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Hardeston, let's see if they want to speak. If they signed up, so I'm just going down the list, I'm going to skip them next one.
Good evening, planning board members, my name's Robert Jackson, six four oh Maritime Way in Topsail Beach, and I'm the Graybull portion of that agreement we mentioned earlier. I just wanted to give some flavor to how that agreement came about. Back when we were zoning, or rezoning this track into. Back when we were zoning, or rezoning this track into the mixed use, conditional use, we are limited to absolutely a hundred and six single-family lots. And there was some consternation with the original, the Forest Sound development behind us with our ingress and egress to Forest Sound Road, which is a private road. And years ago, in the nineties, I believe, it's thereabouts, a gentleman, an attorney named Alex Hall developed that neighborhood. Mr. Howard sold him the land, and Mr. Howard retained the land that we're currently talking about, the hundred and twenty acres. He didn't know what was going to be there. Twenty years later, who was going to buy it, what the, what the project was going to look like. So, he retained ingress and egress for that piece of land onto Forest Sound Road for the benefit of himself as the then-current owner and successor owners. So, and it, and while we were rezoning, we said, hey, we'll, we'll contribute in perpetuity for half of the expense of any maintenance of that road for two reasons. One, it's the right thing to do, and secondly, our homeowners will be using it also, and we want a well-maintained road. So, that, that is a legal agreement, and it does apply to any and all future HOA entities and so on. To the, and it goes binding with the land, as Matt shared. In addition to that, we agreed to repave the surface of that road. It was about a ninety thousand dollar expense. We timed that with when the balance of our construction of the neighborhood was complete, so that heavy vehicles, for the most part, at least rated to the development construction had already commenced. So, we, and then in addition to that, we, they were concerned about potentially people trespassing into their neighborhood, maybe boating traffic, walking, whatever. I don't, a, a, any and all of the above, so they were at that time content on gating their neighborhood. And we went into a process there by which we, we did remit, I think it was around thirty-five thousand dollars, for them to gate the neighborhood to prevent that from happening. So, that's kind of the history behind that. But we're one hundred percent obligated to maintain the road fifty percent. But at the community input meeting, several people said, hey, when you're building this thing, we've got a really nice road now, repaved and so on. If y'all tear it all up, then we're going backwards. We would still be obligated to fix fifty percent of it if we did that. But in fairness, we would, I said, we would make it a condition to fix one hundred percent of it if we damaged the road while we're building this facility. So, that's kind of the background of that. And so, again, I'm happy to answer any questions further if the board has anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Chapman?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andy Chapman, John Andrew Chapman, for the record. I live at two four nine Grove Deer Lane, Hampstead. And I am a resident of Forest Sound. We brought, Suzie and I bought the property back in May two thousand fifteen. And we were a participant at the planning board meeting in November of two thousand fifteen. I, I am glad that the Sanctuary is getting their boat storage. There's no question in my mind that they need that, and they deserve that. I do have objections insofar as the use of Forest Sound Road. My premise is based upon the seventeen bypass that's being constructed right now. And in those plans, there's a write-in, write-out proposed where Forest Sound connects with seventeen. Okay? How are emergency vehicles going to get in an emergency to this boat storage? They're going to have to go down seventeen to Dan Owen Drive, turn left on Free Passage, is that what it is? Turn right on Factory, turn left on Second, come all the way through the second extension through the Sanctuary, turn left on Forest Sound, and enter the boat storage. That doesn't make any sense. The best option would be, one, for the developer to have an internal access to this property, like so many other developments have. Not standing that he doesn't have that? Okay, the other option is utilizing his high ground on the Lee Drive side of this property, where he has access to Lee Drive from high ground on that side of the property. That was discussed back in November of two thousand fifteen, and it's in the records, it's in the minutes. Should future development of this tract of land occur, then the county would enter into discussion with the developer to gain access to Lee Drive Extension. And here we are, we're making a lot of decisions about Forest Sound Road. And yes, we all know it's a private road, okay? Forest Sound residents have no beneficial use whatsoever of this boat storage. Yet we're being asked again to grant ingress, egress. Granted, he has granted ingress, egress, but there are no residents proposed for this property?
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Thank you.
Um, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, the next sign up, I cannot make out the name, the address appears to be forty-three Dewberry Lane?
Yeah, my name is Robert Erickson, Coastal Estates, I represent Sun Communities, which is at forty-three Dewberry Lane. The only question I have was the, the trip ticket that was made. I don't know the HOA's rules at this time, but I know that most HOAs do not allow RV parking in their driveways or boat parking. If that is the case, then there will be additional traffic that'll be coming in and out of seventeen, which is, as you well know, already very congested. So, that is the only question I have. And then the bituminous, once this is built, is there an assurance that they won't pave it? Because if they do, then you have additional water that will be woven off of that piece of property. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Kathy Dobek?
Hi, my name is Kathy Dobek. We, my husband and I live at seven forty-six Corcoran Ferry. One of our main concerns doing this is we have been told by Graybull and the other contractors that they are going to do several things that they have never abided by previously. What makes us ensure that they're going to abide by what they're saying they're going to? For instance, they were told, we were told there was going to be a buffer between the houses that are in the Forest Sound Sanctuary and Corcoran Ferry Road, or Forest Sound Road. That's never been done. We've run into severe obstacles due to the flooding because of the houses being built back there, and we've had trouble with our roads washing out. More water's coming down through, and you're taking more trees out, which is going to affect the environment. We just have major concerns that, how do we know that the, even the HOA is going to be physically, physical enough to ensure to take care of the roads that they say they're going to take care of? From my understanding, they have not paved anything since the beginning. And, but I'm sure our HOA can address that, the board members. But I'm not speaking just for us. I know several people in our neighborhood have the same concerns.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Dobek? Mike Sorg?
Good evening. Mike Sorg, nine sixty Corcoran Ferry Road and Forest Sound subdivision. A few of our concerns, I'm glad they're getting a boatyard, and if I lived there, I would want a boatyard. But nobody in our neighborhood is against the boatyard. We are against the entrance onto Forest Sound Road. They have other ways they can access that piece of property. They haven't explored them. We had a meeting at the library, and it was said there that it hasn't really been explored as far as other options. There is a way to get to that piece of property. As far as security of that boatyard, it will get found out that it's there, like all good things. I would rather have the access, if I lived in that neighborhood, from within my neighborhood. Then whoever's going to come in and out of there has to at least drive by neighbors' houses and know who belongs and who does not belong in there. There will be a little bit of traffic, but I'm more worried about unless they're going to limit the size of boat that you can park in there, you can make that turn probably up to about a twenty, maybe a little foot greater than twenty-foot boat. But some of the boats that I know that, I mean, unless they're going to control the size of boat you can have, you're never going to make that turn with a thirty-foot on the back of there. You're going to have to run off the road. You're going to have to run down that shoulder of the road. Ms. Dobek already stated, we're already dealing with flooding issues that as soon as we get a real hurricane again, our causeway last time almost washed out, there's no doubt with that water not soaking into the ground, it's coming a whole lot quicker our way. And we've already had our, the end of Grove Deer wash out several times, just on regular rainstorms. And they have worked out a easement, it was in nineteen eighty, and that was, the right of ingress and egress was by Alex Hall and the Howards that originally did own it. But they talked about a washdown station. I assume there's going to have some sort of, they want some sort of lights up there. That's not right of utility. I don't know how they're planning on getting stuff there, but right of easement is not right of utility. There's case law that's in North Carolina already established with this that just because they build out there does not mean you're going to get water and lights and everything else out there. I don't know that they've even explored that option, is how they're going to get it from, without accessing it, accessing it off of our road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Matt Mooney?
Hi, I'm Matt Mooney. I'm the HOA president for Forest Sound. And I think we've pretty well beat the death of the access issues. There's at least three other ways to get into this property. Mike mentioned that the utility easement does not exist, it's only for access and ingress. And the one really comment that we would like to bring up is that the roads agreement that you mentioned, there was a lot of truth to that. But however, it's almost eight months past due now, and we have not been able to get paid for twenty twenty-three expenses. As far as I know, in twenty twenty-two and previous, I was on the board then, but as of right now, those costs have not been paid.
How much are those costs?
Um, I'd have to, roughly four thousand dollars. But again, we've, we've already beat out the access ingress issues. We do have, we do owe, we as the neighborhood owe on the Sanctuary ingress and egress to their property. That's been given to them, just south of this plaque here, there is access to their neighborhood. So, we would ask, again respectfully, we all want them to have a boat storage yard, we think it's great for them. And we would just ask that they access that within their community. It may be very atypical to access anonymity to our neighborhood that it's for the sole use of. So, we'd like, we would ask them to jump us up a little. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon Meyer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Brandon Meyer. I live at thirty-one Aladar Court in Sanctuary at Forest Sound. Thank you all for your time tonight, and appreciate all listening to what we have to say. My family and I have lived here for almost three years, and amongst that time, we have met some of our best friends that we get to call our neighbors, our children's best friends, and our favorite, our favorite vacation spot we get to call home. Most of us here are all neighbors. Soon our community will be taken over by the residents and establish our own board. And for years to come, we will establish a rapport to reconcile differences and collaborate to make all of our community better together. No more lawyers, HOA, developers, liaisons, et cetera. It seems as if this animosity towards this rezoning isn't towards a boat storage specifically, but yet still about the community being built itself. Our development went through the proper legislation such as permitting, zoning, and hearings, exactly why we're here today. We didn't buy, build, and develop this community ourself. This wasn't our idea. Instead, we bought a beautiful home in a beautiful community to grow and raise our family while serving our community. In fact, we are good people too, despite what you may think. We serve our community. We're teachers, doctors, nurses, veterans, police officers, active-duty military, fathers, mothers, friends, and neighbors. Our community has not only helped raise home values in the area and community, but has been able to hire and employ many trades, offer an alternative route and evacuation exit to seventeen, splitting maintenance costs on Forest Sound Road, repaving the road, and hopefully we can continue to grow and help each other in future endeavors. In our community that is nearly eighty percent built, there are only roughly fifteen boats and another four to five trailers. We aren't asking to build a Walmart on our land that we will invite anyone extra or traffic to the community. In fact, all of us are members at Hampstead Marina on Factory Road and do not even travel down Forest Sound unless it is to get fuel. The water that will be shed from the boat storage, whether we wash our boat in our driveway or in new boat, boat storage itself, all of that water makes its way through the same wetlands and down to the intercoastal. Lastly, I just want to remind you all again that we're not bad people. We aren't here to make anyone's lives miserable. We aren't here to ask to do anything that is not within legal means that negatively affects the community. I appreciate everyone's time, and a couple of things I just wanted to address. As far as an alternative route coming off Lee Drive, it's my understanding that, that that's all wetlands, and that can't be approached through that way, so we're going through the avenue of Forest Sound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Larkins?
Hello, Linda Larkins, one oh four Blue Heron Lane. There's not a whole lot I want to add because I think other people from my neighborhood have already articulated so many of the major points. I am concerned about a parking lot going in the middle of a wetland. I don't know how that can be allowed. I don't know if an environmental impact study was done or whether that's even necessary in a situation like this. But if you look at it, it is a wetland all around. I don't know if the planning board could recommend that one be done, if it's, if you deem it necessary, but I am concerned about that. We need to preserve wetland areas as they are the sponges that absorb the water and cleanse our groundwater. Yet here we are again, instead of preserving a natural area, we're constructing a parking lot in the middle of wetland. So, I have some questions. Will a permeable material be used such as a pervious cement? Because gravel, when used in a driveway, is not considered pervious because of compaction. So, there are other materials available. I just worry about the runoff and the flooding on our roads. I have heard that the land is higher on the Lee Drive side of the land, and so I just wonder if the project could be positioned on that side of the tract of land, which would be less disruptive to both our community and the wetlands area. There is, I think, K-C-A-Y Court in, within the development, and it looks like a road could go in there. I'm not an expert, I'm just throwing out ideas. Will this parking lot be constructed entirely on dry land, or will there be any filling in of the wetlands? We know the vegetation acts as a sponge for water retention, so how many trees and native vegetation are going to be cleared out of here? Again, we worry about flooding, we worry about water quality. And what's going to happen with the, with the washing station, there's going to be dirty runoff water. So, what is, what is going to, how, how is that water going to be contained and processed? So, I just have questions like this. They may already, you already may know the answers, but I am concerned about the wet, the impact on the wetlands in that area. the wet, the impact on the wetlands in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman knows all the time, it's been the applicant's turn.
Okay, very good. Do we have any questions amongst ourselves?
Do we have a wetlands map of this site, or is there wetland delineation done, or any type of wetland mapping done at the original approval?
I believe the map on the screen has a, at least a preliminary delineation of wetlands. I don't know if the applicant has done any further study of the site.
Is everything in gray is wet, or wetter than the rest of it?
I would, I would like the applicant to confirm that, but that's how it's displayed on the, on the site plan.
Our engineer, Tim Clink scales, who's here, is saying that's the approved line. So that's, is that the full, that's the delineated line? That's the line.
Did you say that again?
Yes, sir. I, I said, our, Tim Clink scales is our civil engineer. He's here to answer any questions the board may have. But he's just indicated to me that that line is shown on that map is the delineated wetlands line.
What type of surface are you gonna use if approved? Will it be gravel, or will it be pervious?
It'll be pervious gravel. Pervious gravel, and that can be a condition.
Maybe you pointed out the size of the turn lane there to address gentleman's concern about larger boats. I think that's a reasonable concern, depending on the length of boat and turning in. How large is that turn lane gonna be? I'm not sure if that's, since it's a private road, I don't think the DOT gets involved in this anymore. I think it's more of a private matter.
Thank you, sir. My name, my name's Brad Schuler, a paramount engineering. We did the turning movements on all the, the turns there. It's a forty-foot radius, so that would work for a fire truck. We did an RV towing a boat. I forgot the number of that, and also a WB fifty truck and all of those with the turning movements that we conducted would be able to handle that turn. If we know of any other larger vessels that, you know, that are going in, we can obviously analyze that. We wanna make sure the turning movements and the radius would be able to suffice. But what we have analyzed so far, that a forty-foot radius would, would be sufficient.
Okay, one more question for you, sir, Mr. Schuler. When you made these, your, your turns, were you turning right off Forest Sound into the property? Or were you turning left from Forest Sound into the property?
Uh, we would have turned right, because that would have been the sharper turn.
And when you were turning right, if you were turning right into the property, did you encroach into the oncoming traffic lane?
I would have to go back and, and look, but yeah, typically for a larger vehicle, you, you would.
Encroach into the oncoming traffic lane?
Utilize the full, the full road in order to make that turn.
Do you, now, were you pulling, was it a standard pickup truck that you're pulling, or were you pulling it with a extended, a crew cab? With a, with an eight-foot bed, six-foot bed, and how long was the boat?
Uh, well, again, we did a, a fire truck, which is obviously the, the requirement to make sure a fire truck can get around the site. I don't have the exact dimensions. We did an RV towing a smaller boat, but the RV was, was pretty large. And then we did a WB fifty semi truck.
All right. Any more questions from Mr. Schuler? All right, thank you.
I have a question. I don't even know who to address it to. The utility right-of-way that was mentioned, that's something we can even consider?
It involves two.
Well, they, uh, one of the folks that spoke said that it's an access right-of-way, but not a utility right-of-way.
I think the question was, can water be run, say, down Forest Sound Road if it's just an access right-of-way and not a utility right-of-way?
Um, well, obviously, I haven't seen it. I don't know what, for sure what it is and what's been done. But I mean, typically, if it is, it says it is just for ingress and egress, you can't put any help. Now.
You can't, we're a little quiet.
Okay, we'll make an attempt to speak louder. If you'd like to come forward, though, you, you're more than welcome. There's plenty of seats up front.
I can speak to the utilities if that's helpful.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir. As I understand it, through Duke Energy and Pender County Utilities, the easements for those utilities are in existence today on Forest Sound Road. In fact, we're, our project, as well as the original Forest Sound, are utilizing those existing easements and utilities currently. So I do think that we're, we're proposing maybe a solar light at the security gate, because it would cost less than running power through there, honestly. But the, you, the utility, the Duke Energy easement and the water easement are on our side of the property at our boundary. So we wouldn't be crossing private property, or Duke Energy and Pender Utilities would not be crossing private property without a, a, a signed easement that's already in place. So we, we don't intend to run any utility that's not currently there with a recorded easement.
Thank you.
And a distinction I should note is it's different for a DOT right-of-way. There's a court of appeals case that says it is presumed that you have the right to run utilities in the DOT right-of-way. And that's done all over the state every day by all kinds of people. But that's separate private. It's presumed the state took more when they put the road in, basically, is the, the short answer.
There was some question about access from the development, or an easement, uh, uh, of, instead of having the, uh, the entrance on Forest Sound, but have it come through the development itself, or having the develop, uh, the access come from these, these were at extension. Can, can the engineer or somebody give us some insight as far as has, has that, has that been explored?
I can speak to that as well. I was involved with the Corps of Engineers when they did the jurisdictional determination here. And it, it has reiterated over many years, and currently, there is no access interior to the existing project, the residential project of the sanctuary or Lee Drive without crossing through the wetlands. The Lee Drive extension to the far west is bordered, one is not there. It's just a right-of-way. There's no road there currently. But if you did put a road there, you would have to cross into the wetlands to go anywhere. And then also interior to the development, you would be filling acres of wetlands to access the site from going east to west into this project area. So we're limited by the Corps of Engineer permit to no more than one-half acre of wetland impacts, which is to the point of many of the, of Forest Sound residents with their environmental concerns. We would echo that. We, we, whether we do or not, we're legally obligated to only fill a maximum of point five acres. We're at point four eight or something there, thereabouts. We're on the cusp of exceeding that, or not exceeding that, but meeting that. So we can't do any more impacts. The Corps wouldn't permit it, especially if they can prove that we have a legal ingress and egress to the subject property. They won't even permit, even if you're under half acre, because they're only gonna permit a wetland impact when it's mandated. And it's not mandated for us because we have legal ingress and egress to the, to our proposed facility from Forest Sound Road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, sir.
Please, uh, uh, it addressed the board from the podium.
I would like to ask the gentleman that was just there, uh, you say y'all have, you do have legal egress and egress on this road?
Yes, sir, we do.
When the, when the man kept, the gentleman kept the large area for use later, he kept, he, he had a right to use that road?
He did, yes, sir.
Okay.
He put in the deed description, when he sold the parcel that's adjacent to the waterway and further west, he included an ingress and egress to his other property that he didn't sell, and he actually made that for himself and/or future assigns. So any future purchase.
And that stays with the land?
Beg your pardon?
That stays with the land.
Stays with the land, yes, sir. And there are other residences on this road that have utilized that, besides us at our development, but other residents that have subsequently purchased lots and properties on this road that have used that same legal ingress and egress. And just as a point, I know Mr. Thurman was there, our original attorney, Mr. Bieberstein, who's passed, discussed this in great length legally with title work and so on at, at the original hearing. And it was also ascertained by then the Forest Sound attorney as well that the ingress and egress existed.
Okay, so, so you do have utilities coming up the road now?
Yes, sir.
And it's on your side of the road?
It, Duke Energy has a recorded easement, along with Pender Utilities, on Forest Sound Road. We have connected to that, or Pender Utilities and Duke Energy connected through those easements to service the existing one hundred and six houses. Yes, sir. I, I don't know that, that we have plans to use Duke Energy or Pender Utilities in this project. We may, but we, we haven't proposed that. We can easily do a solar light and a well. So again, but, but just as a point of reference, they have a recorded easement which services their homes. That's, that easement is not exclusive to just their homes. When the utility companies come in, they can, they can branch off that easement as they see fit, is how the easements are generally written.
Right.
And also, were there any doubt both Duke and Pender County, Pender County Utilities have the right of eminent domain? So if a utility needed to get there, they could get there?
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Are there any questions for staff?
Yeah, I do have one question for staff. Is it, is it part of the conditional zoning that they use that impair, the, the type of, of gravel they were talking about for the parking lot?
It was not one of the staff's conditions, but if the board would like to make that a condition, it's out of the, in your discretion.
So we, we could add that on as a condition of, okay.
Yes, sir.
From what I heard, they are willing to volunteer two additional conditions, which is putting an only pervious surface gravel, as well as if any issues or damage is done to the roadway during the construction or development of this site, they would be one hundred percent responsible for it. Those are the only two I believe that they volunteered.
I, I believe Ms. Moska's condition about amending the restrictive covenants was, was something that Mr. Nichols was agreeable to. Is that correct?
Mr. Beak, did you want to also add a condition about no dry stack structures? I know that was discussed earlier.
So basically, as presented, parking spots.
But as of right now, there is no limit as to what size boat could be brought in, right?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
No battleships or anything like that?
A semi truck, if that's been been in here for that's pretty long.
So are you saying you want to limit it to boats?
I'm making sure we're following that first condition regarding the pervious surfaces. The state stormwater manual defines pervious surfaces, and there's several options, A, B, C, and D, and so on, that the state has pre-approved. It has to do with the soil, permeability, and the type of material used, such as stone, pervious concrete, and so on. So I'd like the condition, because there may be situations in this area, you need a certain type, in this area, you need something else based on the soil conditions. But no matter, it would be pervious in our state.
Right, as long as it's impervious.
And we're obligated already, regardless of the county, we can't exceed any additional impervious there. So even if you allow us, we're not gonna put any there. So, but, but I just would want the condition to be clear that it would be a pervious surface.
Whatever kind state approves.
Yes, sir.
We try very hard not to usurp other departments' authorities, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one question for you while you're at the podium. The, the apron pulling out onto the Forest Sound Road, that's gonna be gravel as well, or that portion of it's gonna be paint?
Well, that's a great example. I think there, the best, in my view, the best, uh, uh, material would be pervious concrete, which would serve the same purposes to, from the stormwater standpoint, I think it would be a better use there. So, but again, I've, we've got the engineers working on that, and we have, we did ask for those aprons to be extended for the turn-in radiuses there so that we didn't, you know, damage the shoulder there.
Right.
Ingress and egress there, so, but that's a great point. I think there'll be certain spots with a lot of, of travel that may be better than pervious concrete.
Would you be okay with pervious concrete for the length of, I guess?
Is it a fire truck, or?
You know, a car and a boat. What I've seen happen is they just get dug out, right? If you pull up, over time, it just gets dug out. So I would think the pervious, the pervious concrete needs to be a certain length.
Yeah, I, no, I agree. At the entrance, you're, you're referencing specifically.
Yeah, at the entrance.
I would concur with that.
Ms. Moska, you had a question for the, okay. Are there any more questions? For the applicant or for staff? Is there any questions for fellow board members? An entertaining, a motion? An entertaining motion? Does anybody have a motion? To, uh?
I, I would like to start with a discussion.
Okay, that's good.
It seems clear that everyone thinks that these folks should have a boat storage. From my perspective and open-mindedness, I disagree that the owner has a right to this road. I don't see how you get around that. That's a property right. So I think they have a right to access that. As much as unpopular as that is, I'm having a hard time getting around that. I think that, because saving the wetlands is important because it does help with an exponential runoff. Pervious would address that. And I don't know if they actually can get access to Lee Drive. Now, that's my one question. I don't know. But I do think there is something to what they had approved previously with the maximum amount of, you know, pervious surfaces that is legitimate. And if that's the case, then they would have to access this road even if they said, "We don't want you to." Now, I could be wrong about that. That's the only thing I'm not sure about. But it's back to, I still think they have a right to access that road, which is a property right, one of those bundles of rights. So, you know, the conditions that we've set is, you know, one hundred percent responsible for damage after construction, pervious surfaces, pervious concrete at a certain length. I don't know what that length is, the apron and the, and the turn-in, no dry, dry stacks, structures, and amending the restrictive covenants to, you know, coincide with these new assigned spaces or allocated spaces. Is that correct?
Not only, yeah, I'm sorry, the, first of all, it's a hundred and sixty-one feet is the entrance I proposed.
Hundred and sixty-one feet?
But, um, so that about the covenants again, to make sure that it's the homeowners or the renters, and it's not subbed out or these, some these down or rented out. It's for their privacy.
Can we go back to your conditions? Because I think that was somewhat addressed there.
Since private and private.
So the storage facility should remain private and only for the use of residents of Sanctuary at Forest Sound Development, and the restrictive covenants will be updated to reflect that.
Reflect that, yes.
Were we all in agreement with this, or any concerns? Were we all in agreement with this or any concerns? I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies in the Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Policy five-one-F recommended, recommended action five-one-K-I. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the low-density residential future land use classification in Pender County two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. The proposal is reasonable and the public interest, in the public interest because it has the potential to be generally consistent with current land uses in the vicinity. In addition with the following conditions. The project shall comply, one, the project shall comply with all requirements of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. The applicant shall meet all local, state, and federal regulations. The storage facility shall remain private and only for the use of residents of Sanctuary at Forest Sound Development. And the restrictive covenants will be updated to reflect this. Any damage or maintenance needed to the road after completion of the development will be one hundred percent responsible for the, by the applicant. Financial or otherwise. The site of the storage facility will be of a pervious surface. There will be no dry stack, stack structures. And the apron and entrance of the storage facility will be pervious concrete at?
One hundred and sixty-one foot length.
Minimum of a hundred and sixty-one foot length. Open to any amendments?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
He does, he's got the gift of gab, this guy.
Sir, next time you can sign up on the sheet if you want to speak.
All right. Mr. Cannon? I apologize.
I, I was asking clearly for a consensus if there was disagreement with what I stated. So I felt like everyone was in agreement with the private road access, which for me is very hard. If they have access, they have access. And if there's a civil matter that they can, the folks can take it civilly, but we have to go upon what we have in front of us.
Plus, where they're entering, I looked, there are, there were five lots that they're passing. And I know that all of them are not developed. I was going to ask the question, who of those five lots are here, but I, I didn't. But, I mean, they're, they're really not upsetting all of the traffic further down in the subdivision. So I was okay with that.
I remember a case, not to get off on a tangent here, it was, it was about wind water. And. I took into consideration what the developer didn't do for, in a past development. And. And this was not the past development, this was a, a, a next phase of future development. Well, you know, they took it to arbitration and it was overturned. Because we cannot take into consideration what developers have done or haven't done in the past. That's true. We're, we're bound, we're, we're bound by that. We can't, we can't.
Yes.
We have to look at the case in front of us. We can't take anything else into consideration, but the case in front of us. So I think you did a good job, Danny and I.
If they were looking, if the residents looked at the GIS, they would see what's wetland, what's not. Regardless of what they're looking at with their eyes, the army corps determined that at some point that it was wetland. And that's what it is unless someone uses it for another designation.
Just because official land gets wet when it rains does not mean it's wet.
Correct.
No.
But here's the thing, even if they did have access to that lead drive directly. I mean theoretically, they could have access to lead drive and have access to that road if they wanted to.
Right, correct.
And if we said no to that, I'm not sure if that's a legal action against us.
That would be very, to try to say you've got to use one access over another when you have, as far as we know, they do have the legal right to use that road. And so typically you don't get to tell somebody, we don't, no, use a different way.
And the other thing about, he made, the point he made about the wetlands. If you have another path, they're less inclined to give you the wetlands offset credit. You know, you pay the money and they let you cross the wetlands. If you have another way to do it without crossing the wetlands, you're less inclined to do that. Next case?
I, I believe this one will go a little bit quicker. But the second case on the agenda, if the board's ready, is just a, a general use rezoning. The county's planning and development department staff is the applicant. The owner of this property is CMH Homes, Inc., doing business as Clayton Homes. It's a general use rezoning application to rezone a piece of property that's about four tenths of an acre. From the PD Plan Development Zoning District to the RP Residential Performance Zoning District. As you can see on the map, the subject property sits about a quarter mile southeast of the intersection of Sloop Point Loop Road and Coal Drive. On the zoning map, you can see the majority of the property to the north and to the west is zoned PD. Property to the south, to the east, and partially to the west is zoned RP. This is a twenty-twenty aerial, I'll show you some updated photos here in a moment. But this photograph was taken in twenty-twenty, shows a lot of the land surrounding this property is either undeveloped or used for single-family residential purposes. This is a photo of the site, this was taken a couple of weeks ago. The site right now, the photo on the left, this was taken standing on Coal Drive facing the property. You can see there's a manufactured home on the property. And then the photo on the right is taken basically with, with my back to the property, standing in the driveway facing out to Coal Drive. Then the photo on the left here is taken at Sloop Point Loop Road facing down Coal Drive. Then the photo on the right is taken at the site access looking towards Sloop Point Loop Road. So again, this is a general use rezoning, so there's no site-specific development plan associated with this proposal. So the board would have to consider all uses that are permitted by right or by special use permit in the RP zoning district. There's a handful of examples of the residential uses and commercial uses in the chart on the left-hand side of the screen. Some of the commercial uses that are permitted by right include home occupation or public administration. And those that are permitted with a special use permit include artisan manufacturing, cottage occupations, food and beverage stores. Then the table on the right shows the dimensional standards of the RP zoning district. Again, just to touch on traffic briefly, the size of this parcel severely limits the amount of traffic that it could generate in and of itself. And you saw in the photo that there's a single mobile home placed on the property now. So the traffic impacts are expected to be negligible. But we do have annual average daily traffic counts for Sloop Point Road just west of where it meets Country Club Drive. And that volume-to-capacity ratio as of twenty-twenty-three is just under sixty percent. So the future land use plan prescribes this property as coastal residential. If I may read a, a portion of the coastal residential future land use category description to the board. It reads coastal residential land uses are located east of US Highway seven, of the US Highway seventeen corridor. And generally within a half mile of estuarine waters such as coastal creeks and the intracoastal waterway. Appropriate uses include single-family residences, community recreation and open space uses, and water-based recreation uses, both public and private. Development density within this category is three units an acre or less. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. The proposal is consistent with that coastal residential future land use category. It's compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. And it's also supported by two policies and one goal of the comprehensive land use plan. That's policy five-point-one-V, five-point-one-W, and then goal five-point-eight. The plan consistency statement is on the screen for the board to use if they so desire. There's not a representative from the owner here this evening, but staff has been in close contact with the owners about this project.
Question. The, on the commercial side, is there any, any way to, um.
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, not that, that you don't do much with three tenths of an acre, but there is a possibility. Is there any, anything we can, anything we can do to, um, kind of keep somebody from turning this into a commercial piece of property?
Not in a general use rezoning, you can't place conditions of approval on a general use rezoning. You know, I would note to the board that it's currently zoned PD, which has substantially more commercial uses that would be allowed by right than, than by, you know, a by-right project. You know, of course it would have to.
This would be a down zone.
Right.
Okay.
All right, all right. Well, I just, I thought I needed to ask the question anyway.
Preference? We've done it before. We had an RP project that the developer wanted to use as a lay-down yard. And they were down-zoned to do that. Usually downzoonings are favorable, almost many years ago. It's the last one I remember.
Any questions for staff?
Are all those other lots that line that Coal Drive, are those vacant?
Uh, so further up, closer to Sloop Point Loop, most of those lots have homes on them. Some of these lots have been cleared, though I don't believe there are any structures on them right now. The board may recall, right behind this area, a master plan was approved at the last meeting or two meetings ago, I can't remember exactly, for a, a residential development.
Is that a capital development?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Is this Coal Drive, is it, is it a paved street or is it gravel?
It's partially paved. It's paved a little ways down and then it's.
Gravel.
Yes, sir. Like dirt.
Do we have any questions? I'm entertaining a motion. Make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and make a finding that the proposal is consistent with Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Said approval is reasonable and in the public interest and furthers the goals of Pender two-point-oh comprehensive land use plan. Because it's consistent with the following policies. Policy five-point-one-point-V, policy five-point-one-point-W, goal five-point-eight. Thank you.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Well, that concludes the, the public hearings, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any on the screen? So I guess we need to discuss where the next meeting will be?
Yes, sir, and we have a, a discussion item, if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, well, I, I'll have to get back to my screen. Oh, okay.
I'll, I'll be brief, I just want to keep the board informed as we go through the process of, of developing a new comprehensive land use plan. So we had our first steering committee meeting on June twenty-fourth, so last Monday. We've got a good group together and we're really excited to begin to, you know, put the bones of this plan together. We'll keep the board updated, maybe not monthly, but at least every other month. And as we get going, there'll be more to report out to the board. But I just wanted to give you all an update that we are underway, the steering committee is met. We expect to really kick off the public engagement come fall. And of course, we'll be leaning on y'all to help us get the word out and keep folks engaged throughout this process.
Do you take minutes for those meetings?
We, our, our consultant is taking, has taken minutes. And so we've been talking about how we want to make those available.
Can you make them available to the planning board?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Can you also make the presentations? Some bad feedback in here, I think. Yeah. Can you make the presentations available to us as well?
Yes, sir.
And lastly, I was at that meeting in the audience, and there was some very interesting data that I think would be important for this group to, to look at. Uh, not just for the steering committee. I can't think of the lady's name, but there was a lot of economic information there. Just some information that may be more relevant to the commissioners regarding taxes, but I still think this body should know where a lot of the taxes are come from. There was demographic information that I thought was very interesting. Kind of what they call a tapestry of different demographics of our county. So I don't know if I could ask that, that ERSI or ERSI information. We provided a little bit more than just the snapshot that it gave. I don't know if the consultant has done a lot more data and they're just giving a snapshot, but if they could provide us with more detailed information so that we can go through as a planning board at our, you know, at our leisure and peruse that information just to, you know, help us know more about Pender County as we make decisions.
I think that's a great idea, I'm sorry.
You know, we haven't had a.
A workshop.
Yeah, workshop. It might, that might be a real good.
Thank you for bringing that up. That was going to be a topic I wanted to address with the board is, I know you, you mentioned we haven't had any workshops recently. One thing that we've talked about internally is just some text amendments that we have kind of in the pipeline. And it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to, you know, just talk through those with y'all, not in a public hearing format. So a workshop on the horizon seems like a good idea.
Well, it would be a better idea if it was in bird eye.
The reason being is we used, when we had them in the past, it was an hour before. And we've already seen one trying to get here at six o'clock. It is, I mean, granted, you guys probably might have the same problem too, trying to.
It's fine, I always stop at Bear Creek, you know, grocery and get some peaches or strawberries, so it's fine with me. Place is great, if you guys haven't been there, I think it's Bear Creek. It's in that Maple Hill.
That, I mean, that would be a great, great idea.
Yes, sir.
Now, are you referring to the lady that was the one doing the speaking in person?
The, there was a lady, and this is just from my former knowledge, working in the industry about that data. There was the woman who was from, I don't know the name of her consulting group, but she was the economic consultant. And she was on Zoom. And that data that she has, like, that's expensive data. And so if she has that to give a snapshot, she probably has a lot more about Pender County that is very, not just valuable, but insightful. As people making, you know, these decisions up here to understand.
So there's going to be a, a report that she's going to provide as part of the plan. Now, in the scope of work, we don't have her coming down to give a presentation, but perhaps we can, to, a presentation to the planning board. Perhaps we can work something out where she could give a virtual presentation and offer a little bit more detail than kind of the high-level information that she provided at the steering committee meeting last week.
Mr. Chairman, may I intrude on the agenda for just a second?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we are blessed to have our presence of our new manager, Michael Silverman. And he sat through and I don't care what anybody says, I'm sure he did not leave sheets down from people's hands and, and break their pens so they couldn't sign up. Because he did. and break their pens so they couldn't sign up, 'cause he didn't help. I gotta say, no, I know, we, yeah, I saw you coming in, so I know that was it, but anyway, and again, I, I don't know, Michael, you wanna just introduce yourself for a brief second? And I had invited him to come to the board, so you know, I, I, I thought it was important.
Thank you.
Welcome, hey. Great, thank you and welcome. Um, of course, I want to thank all of the staff for making our job much, much easier by giving us the ammunition that, um, to make decisions, um, that, uh, sometimes are difficult. Uh, not always popular, but sometimes difficult for us. Thank Justin for helping out with the gentleman. Yeah, he did, I, I tell you what, um, it's seven years, and that's the first time, this is the first time that's ever happened for, for me, and hopefully the last. But I appreciate it, Justin.
Thank you guys for the photographs with the cases, I think.
Yeah, the photos are great.
Okay.
Photos of buffers will be really good.
Okay, we'll add that, we'll add that.
It's, 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 you know, all, all of these little, these little things, well, sometimes they're not little, but they all help. They, they do help, and, and hopefully, um, the public, they, they can see it, and it can help them as well, hopefully.
I, I will add that we're open to feedback, you know, we, we try and anticipate the questions that the board may ask, but if you have any questions or things that you want to see in advance, please let us know so that we can have a response prepared.
I, I like the, uh, the timer.
Thanks for that.
I wish, I wish, the, one other thing is, yeah, I know that the thing is sitting right there in front of you, and the yellow light comes on when it gets right down there towards the end. It would be nice if, if the audience could see that as well, um, I, I mean, just.
There, there is a buzzer feature, but I've muted it, I didn't wanna set people off too bad.
Or, or some Jeopardy music.
So, uh, well, the person speaking can't see it?
Yeah, no, they can, they got a little.
Oh, red, yeah.
Oh, so they do have a timer there?
They've got a timer.
Well, you could, um, like Ms. Moskowitz just said, you could turn this one around and show it to the public because the, the, the yellow shows, and then when the time's up, the red shows.
There, there's a, uh, clock right here for the speaker, but yeah, for the, for the public at large.
Yeah.
Found it somewhere.
I got you. Alright, well, next meeting date?
I believe the, yeah. Yeah, August sixth, we've got a few cases on this side of the county. Of course, the board's discretion.
No work session then.
Yeah, yeah, we, why don't we shoot for a work session in September then, and that one could be in Bergoff.
That, that way we'll give you adequate time to, um, hopefully get the information. So, the way I, I interpret that is it might be a, a long night in August.
I'm trying to remember exactly, and if, if y'all think of anything, but we'll have at least a few cases on the agenda. At least three, yeah.
Is that Hawksville Cove coming up?
No, that's, thank you for asking, that is, that, that project has already been approved. It's, it's essentially a by-right development.
I saw the sign, the sign out there.
Right, at this point, so it's all administrative approvals from here on, yes, sir, unless they want to revise something.
I doubt it.
Alright, yeah.
Wouldn't be advisable.
Yeah, yeah.
When did Hawksville Cove first start?
Twenty-ten.
It started at Saint George's Reef.
I can say, yeah, I know, and how many names does it have, yeah?
We can have Kyle Brewer come back and offer a history. Here's a workshop idea.
So, uh, where would we like to have the meeting, um? Uh, yeah, I know.
I'm thinking it's appropriate to have the meeting in Hampstead at seven P M. on the second, the first Tuesday of August. Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, I mean, it just, it's, I don't know. Ken, you can bring your wife if you'd like.
No, she done told me, she come through the last meeting we had, she said, no, I ain't doing that no more.
That was the ten-thirty meeting, right?
Yeah. Yeah, she did, she wasn't real.
You were set up, or she was set up.
She was a little bored when she left.
Some are boring, some are not.
Mr. Chairman, we entertaining a motion to adjourn?
Uh, if, unless there's anything else from staff, I certainly am.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.